Well, Happy Election Day to anyone that can hear my voice. I hope that you've all voted or will vote today. And we'll now jump into the work session. Our first agenda item today is the strategic plan update to ensure high-quality instruction and relevant educational experiences for all students. This discussion is being led by Dr. Benton with support from Tiffany and Chris Taylor as board members and obviously Dr. Summers. So, Dr. Benton, if you would like to go?
Actually, I think we're going to let Mrs. Upchurch pick us off.
Oh, I see. Tiffany, will you start?
I will pick this off, and then I'm going to pass the baton pretty quickly. So I just want to, so I'm trying to actually pull up. I'm going to use this because I can't get my documents to pull up. So obviously, this is just a reminder that we're our team, one team. So we were tasked with looking at goal number two. And if we recall, that came from our board retreat where we came up with five rocks on what is our long-term strategic plan. And no goal is more important than the other. They all work synchronously together, and one cannot succeed without the other. But for the purposes of this discussion, we're talking about goal number two, which is to ensure high-quality instruction and relevant educational experiences for all students. And how this fits into the framework of our strategic plan is all five of our strategic plans come together. Also, I want to point out, just to be clear, that this goal, this is kind of a, I'm glad we're working on this in our work session because it's going to be kind of a crash course on something that is so in-depth. And this is where the rubber hits the road on why we educate and why our organization exists in the first place. But for example, I've been involved in BAC and DACH and in our school district for 12, going on 13 years, and I only have a small fraction of a layman understanding. So that's why we hire and trust in our highly qualified professionals and experts such as Dr. Summers and Dr. Benton. So they're going to lead the discussion. And keep in mind that as we're working through this, this is just one layer. It's like an onion, if you want to think about it. It's like an onion being peeled back. But then we'll get into what are we as a board? What is our role in our advocacy, in our budgetary process, in our policies and advocacy? So if you want to slip to the next one. So we've seen this all before, and number two again is ensuring high-quality instruction and relevant education experiences for all students. It fits into the framework of one, two, three, and four. And I just want to take a pause to say that something I really appreciate, Chris, is that we are putting on our agendas now, how each of our, when we're talking about our items, how does this fit into our vision? How does this fit into our goals? So I really appreciate that. So I like that we can see where these fit in. So our next slide, and this is where I'm going to pass the baton in a second, but I just want, again, I want to make sure that we keep in mind that there's nothing simple about this. It's complex. It's multifaceted. It requires years of experience and professionalism. And then we also have to keep in mind that regardless of what we do or don't like or want, at the end of the day, there's still a top-down approach that comes from the state that we have that compliance piece to this as well. So we're going to review our D-38 mission and why. Why are we even reviewing? Why are we, why is this one of our rocks? And then we'll channel into our shared vision for students and learning in D-38 from Dr. Summers and Dr. Benton. And then I'll let Dr. Summers go from there with, as we move forward.
Thanks, Mrs. Upchurch. Thank you for picking us off, getting us started. Appreciate you calling attention to the fact that this is really at the core of everything that we do. It's about our kids, absolutely. It's also about our teachers, and it's really about our parents and our community as well. So we thought in dissecting the onion that it would be good to start from the very top layer. And as we reflect on our mission statement, as a starting point, we want to acknowledge and elevate the fact that we are a partnership of parents, the community, and educators, which is ultimately aspiring to prepare each and every one of our students to be successful, learners, productive citizens, and caring contributors to society. And we do so by developing each student's talents in a safe, nurturing environment while also seeking to inspire a lifelong love of learning. And so when we work to unpack this a little bit alongside our why statement, which is the next slide, and this why statement, I think surfaced about four or five years ago. It's very simple in the words that it's referring to, but again, there's a lot to unpack here. We believe in local, national, and global stewardship to create strong citizens who will secure a better world. So this is our why of why we educate. In the next slide, what I really just wanted to call out as we're taking time to think about what we're really after here in goal two. It speaks to high-quality instruction. It speaks to relevant educational experience. But I think another way to frame the entire conversation is what is our vision for student learning in District 38? So you see a few phrases or terms that we call out in our mission and our why statement currently. We talk about successful learners and productive citizens and caring contributors to society. We talk about local, national, and global stewardship and strong citizens who will secure a better world. And while those are all noble statements and those are all great things to aspire to, what I'm going to invite us to do is go a step further and really operationalize that or further define and refine, if you will, what we think about in terms of what our graduates from District 38 know, understand, and are able to do. Another way to frame that is what are the essential skills and competencies that reflect student preparedness? Now, we were going to put you on the spot and take you through a little bit of an exercise here, but we're going to let you warm up a little bit more through the presentation. The next slide is really definitions or terms that speak to what are those critical skills and competencies that we want for each and every one of our graduates? And make no mistake, this is not something that just happens as a student is entering into their 11th or 12th grade years, they're preparing for that next step into the real world. This is something that we believe is threaded through our entire system. Commitments to what does it mean to be a self-directed learner, to have a personal responsibility, to know what it means to be socially responsible, to have civic engagement, to see ourselves within different communities, to prioritize communication, speaking, writing, reading, listening. Of course, collaboration, critical thinking, problem solving, innovation, teamwork, leadership. These are all real important skills that are in alignment with what our 21st century goals are, that every student will be able to demonstrate as they're working to also reflect content mastery across an entire curriculum. But when you think about the skills, they're enduring skills, right? They're the skills that are going to support each and every student way beyond what happens during the time that they're in our schools, and it really speaks to that future success that they can carry into any walk of life or in any chosen domain or field of endeavor that they can then apply. So we just want to really make sure that we're thinking through these skills and competencies because everything that we do has to be reflective of skills and competencies that we are actively seeking to develop in each and every one of our kiddos. So the next slide just takes that one additional step, and it frames the questions that we ask as we think about our vision into a little bit more of what are we talking about when we have this goal to focus on high-quality instruction and relevant educational experience? So for example, what does it take to ensure equity and relevance in education? And what is our definition and understanding of high-quality instruction? We want to unpack that a little bit more. What are the implications of this goal for teachers? Certainly, we're thinking a lot about what the impact or the outcomes are as we think about student learners, but we also have to lift up what we mean as we're working through these definitions and the way that they're operationalized for our teaching staff and really for all of our staff throughout the system. And these are not meant to be an exhaustive list, but it gives you just a sense of thinking about what are some of the questions that we ask ourselves when we're actually engaged in the work of teaching and learning? So our teachers spend a lot of time collaboratively. For example, I'm going to use a grade level. Let's talk about the third grade at any one of our elementary schools. We have a very set and clear path toward understanding what are the standards within any given content area in third grade. So a starting point for that conversation may look like, well, what do we want our students to learn? And if we're looking at reading, for example, how do we make sure that students are actually learning that or they're demonstrating growth toward a particular standard within reading? We then ask the very critical questions, what do we do when our students have already learned something, right? So formatively, we can understand that students may already be reading at a certain grade level. We want to make sure that we're not just meeting them at that one spot, but that we're addressing what their future needs are as well. There's an opportunity to accelerate, for example, or go a little bit deeper within their learning experience, as well as what do we do when our students have yet to or students still have room to grow? And if they're not currently meeting a grade level benchmark, then what's our response and what are those needs? Ideally, in that collaborative space, our teachers are not just left to their own devices. They're not just thinking about that in terms of their own individual classroom or individual students that they're assigned to. The beauty of collaboration, particularly in what we refer to as professional learning communities, our PLCs, are designed for teachers to be able to share those experiences with each other to say, you may have had really good success with your class on this particular topic or this standard. What can we learn from that experience if Dr. Benton has 90% or more of her kids that are demonstrating mastery and I only have, for example, 50% of my kids that are? Then there's a lot of opportunity for me to ask questions to say, how did you get to that result? And what are some of the different instructional strategies or interventions that you may have used? Vice versa, maybe our students in my class are knocking it out of the park in math, and Dr. Benton is saying to me, hey, I'd love to hear what your practices are in that space. At the end of the day, it's really about a shared collaborative approach to how we work better together than just individually and alone. And we could just unpack what we do with PLCs as one example of this whole conversation. We just wanted to call out the fact that there is a lot of, to your point earlier, Tiffany, a lot of complexity in that space, but also we try to make that simple, make that manageable, and ultimately serve every student that's in our care. So the last big question that we would frame at least through this part of the presentation is how can we ensure that all of our students, and we really mean all, are effectively prepared for future life success? So again, that concept of equity and where that fits into all of this is something else that we want to make sure that we're calling out. But to help illustrate this a little bit further, we have a metaphor, and Dr. Benton is going to introduce a three-legged stool.
Dr. Benton, I'm sorry. So I have to tell you something about Tavlo's response. You guys peeling, it's making me cry. Literally. We got to peel something else.
How about a Brussels sprout?
There you go.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. So when we think about learning, we're trying to conceptualize it into an accessible metaphor for folks. And we did talk about how this is complex work, but at the same time, it's important that we make sure that we can all speak to it. So what is your elevator speech about what the school district actually does? So we decided that a three-stool metaphor would be a good way to conceptualize what we do in this form. So the basic foundation of the stool, it has to have something solid to actually set upon, otherwise you can't set on a stool. And we think about what's the purpose of the stool. The purpose of the stool is actually to be able to lay, to sit flat, that you can sit. The idea is that every single one of our students sits atop a stool, and they have their own, their own learning that's occurring. If the stool's not stable, the student can't sit, can't access the learning. The foundation is what we call conditions for learning. So every single piece that Casey just laid out actually helps us create that foundation. It's a community partnership. It's a collaborative endeavor with parents. Obviously, it's a cooperative effort with our board, and our board's cooperative effort with and advocacy with different organizations across the state. It's attuning to the needs that have been presented within our own community as well as state and nationally, as well as globally. It's paying attention to all those matters. It's also making sure that students feel safe and that they have their basic needs met. So conditions for learning are a variety of things that add to that foundation. The three components of the stool that actually allow it to set properly are a combination of the what, the how, and the how do we know that they know it? So it's the standards of curriculum, the structure of our pedagogy, which is the methods and practice with which we teach, and assessment or metrics, so measurement that we actually can measure whether or not students are learning or what we're doing is actually helping them attain mastery. So I have a couple of examples that I'd like to walk you through. You do have a document details out, and we could do this three-stool metaphor for every single component that is on this, but I want to highlight two things. Are you okay if I go to the board?
Please.
You want to leave it there or just bring it around? So the first one I want to talk about is K5 literacy. We've talked a lot about literacy in the last few board meetings, basically the last six months, about the value of looking at our data and determining that a certain percentage of our students are not in our grade level well. So let's go with the stool metaphor. So when I think about my foundation for literacy, there's a certain level of readiness that all students need to have to access reading. Tiffany sits on our preschool council, and they talk a lot about measuring students' readiness for learning. We also have a variety of state and local expectations. One might even say we have state mandates, right? We have a Read Act. We have things that we're also held accountable to. So there are certain things that limit or dictate what we measure as well as how we potentially can instruct, because there is, believe it or not, research on the science of reading, and we're expected to stay up on that research. We also want to talk about the value here of parents, community, and our board to be able to help us keep that foundation strong. So if I draw my stool, please don't judge. I'm not an artist. And the fact that I wrote all of that out is a miracle. I normally write in abbreviations, so I'll start with the abbreviations. And I'm going to try and attempt at a 3D stool here. We'll see how I can make this work too.
Bravo.
Oh, thank you. I need some positive reinforcement. So what we have is our student hopefully accessing their learning, right? So they're right here. When we think about the standards, we have literacy standards. We have reading, writing, communicating standards that are set by the state. We also have a variety of state expectations, what we consider benchmarks or learning points that students have to hit. When we think about our instruction, there is actually methodology or pedagogy that's tied to teaching reading. There are certain things that are demonstrated, as we call them evidence-based approaches, that we want to make sure we instruct on. And then we also have our assessment or our metrics. Our assessment that we utilize for K3 is our devils or cadence is now what it's called, and a variety of other assessments that are built within for benchmarking. We also look at our data from a grade level perspective. We also have what we call curriculum-based assessments or CBAs. And we also have our assessments that are at the state level, and we utilize obviously that CMAS for third grade on up. We measure growth over time. We also look at our MAP data or NWA MAP data, and we provide a reading assessment that's basically not just about accessing the text but understanding the text, typically reading Within all of this, there's professional development that occurs as well as teacher collaboration at every single level. If any one of these pieces of the stool is not tended to, then the student can't access their learning. Literacy and performance, what questions do you have?
So where does SEO fit into this social emotional learning? Is that part of your foundation?
Yeah, it's conditions for learning, so making sure that there's a level of readiness for every student to be able to access their learning.
Are there, so this is K5. I assume there's a transition model at a high school. I'm using familiar terms.
Are you talking about in terms of literacy or reading?
Well, the curriculum, for example, one of the legs of the stool is different when you move into middle school or high school than it is in grade school. So I would suspect so is the assessments, and I would suspect so is the instruction. So the entire model, I suspect, is different in K5 than it would be for middle school and/or high school.
So really, when the transition starts to occur, not necessarily, so the resources can vary based on level, and we did just adopt a new resource for grades six through 12, but there's a transition that occurs in second, third, and fourth grade where students are no longer learning to read, to access text, to decode, and to understand what the letters represent. They're actually reading to learn, and there's a comprehension emphasis that really starts to play in, starting second, third, and then basically by the end of third grade, we want to see that their comprehension as well as their ability to be literate and access what those letters actually represent are at grade level. So if we can get to that benchmark, the stool gets to set. You're right, we will vary what the stool legs actually comprise of in terms of types of resources. Some of the assessments will change, but the reality is that if we don't, if we don't, you can think about it as stools each grade level, because each grade level has different components that we're measuring, right? Different metrics as well. Not just three stools.
Yeah, I hear what you just said. But when I look at kids generally, K through 12 or pre-K through 12, there's a reason we have K through 5, and they have a single teacher. And then there's a reason we have a transition period, whether it's junior high or middle school, and there's a reason why we have high school. And those models are different. And what I heard you say is there's differences within K to 5, grade by grade, but we could also then say, well, it's also dependent on teacher. There's so many variables here. It's like, you know, we were talking about earlier, but, you know, in a way to communicate with our community. Is there, is there a different model for K through 5 that you have for middle school and high school, even knowing that it gets more complex?
I would agree that in terms of, I think the word I'm getting hung up on is model. There's just different methodology and different resources.
I'll change the word. So there's a different methodology when you move into transition middle school?
The methodology is to shift from learning to read to reading to learn. That's where that shift occurs. And in terms of what you're talking about in terms of sixth grade and the complexity of adding additional teachers, it's because they're content-based teachers. You're right, K5. There is some departmentalization that occurs for fourth and fifth, where you may have a teacher who specializes in math and science, and you have a teacher specializes in social studies and English language arts. It just depends on the model at each site, but they started with content specialists, and that's actually because of the amount of work that has to happen for them to understand the complexity of context, of the content.
Dr. Benton, I appreciate the level of understanding you have. I really did. Unfortunately, I can't become you, have your level of understanding and the depth of understanding that you have. So I'm trying to put a grasp on it as a member of the public. So the detail within each classroom, I actually sort of just trust that the curriculum, the teacher, and the assessment process is working. Now, everything you're describing is, it's not over my head, don't get me wrong, but it's in the weeds for me a little bit, because I'm like, how do I, how do I explain that? And honestly, I wouldn't fail if I tried.
I do think considering the, that's what we were talking about with the model of, you're right, it's curriculum, instruction, assessment. The learning conditions are obviously important too, and if you consider the pandemic right now and the impact on the learning conditions and the learning environment, it's very different. So I would say that you're right, it's curriculum, it's instruction, and it's assessment or metrics, to keep it to that model.
So I would also add that the level of learning changes from each grade level, and we're going to get into, in a few minutes, we're also going to get into how can we as a board better advocate and how do we engage our community in terms that they can understand with also the understanding that it's complex? But the foundation, that three-legged foundation, the standards, the curriculum, instruction, assessment, that's a foundation, and that's a, that doesn't, those are still consistent. They, how the stool looks, whether it's a spiral leg or a, just metaphorically speaking, or a wood leg, that may change as they get older, but if you notice, see how that looks like a block? So at elementary, it's a building block to get up to that other, to the higher level where the instruction is more focused on subject matter versus the elementary where it's a building block to get there. So the three legs, though, still stay the same, just what it looks like is what changes as our children get older and progress.
Yeah, when we think about the learning progression of standards from early childhood, pre-K, kindergarten through usually second grade, and then how, as we move into intermediate levels of elementary, moving into more middle and then high school, I think partly to your point, you're seeing a level of complexity in the content that requires a different type of specialization, which is why essentially in middle school and high school, you have multiple teachers that are teaching multiple contexts. Actually, we start in sixth grade, usually departmentalizing, and as Laurie said, you see some evidence of that in fourth and fifth grade. But in terms of the essential process, and I think you said this, Chris, just a few minutes ago, yes, the curriculum or the standards are the essence of what we are making sure that our kids are learning. How we make sure they're learning it is a function of really good teaching and assessments that measure whether or not students are really demonstrating that mastery according to the expectations that we've set. It's really as simple as that. The complexity turns into every student is unique, every teacher has strengths and limitations depending on what their experiences are and the training and professional development, et cetera. We're trying to be much more intentional about a guaranteed and viable curriculum that we see in action across every level of our system. So we have some really good things that are in place. K5 literacy is a great example, as we've already talked about. We're not where we want to be in terms of a universal core and supplemental resource because quite honestly, we haven't invested as much dollars and time and resource into what that need is. So that's one of the reasons that we're actually spending time here right now.
But let me just add, like you just said, because that's an example where there was some neglect.
Yes.
We were behind in our curriculum. Is that, I mean, maybe neglect's the wrong word, I'm sorry, but the reality is, we were behind. This three-legged school, the three-legged stool was out of bounds, and our assessments demonstrated.
Coupled with the fact that the foundational base of what we're, the environment that we're working in right now is becoming much more deliberate at a state level to say, when we want to see every student, and we mean every student, achieving at grade level expectations for reading by third grade, that is a predictor of success into middle school and even success all the way into high school. Now, I think we do a pretty good job, even if our students aren't demonstrating that level of proficiency by third grade, still, we don't give up on them there. We continue to put skills and resources and supports in place to enable students to overcome that gap or continue to experience growth. But I think the other thing that maybe went into your term neglect is I just don't know that we were as intentional about a system-wide approach to literacy instruction. I think we were more or less trusting and allowing schools to kind of pick their own path toward whatever the outcomes were, which everybody was striving for the same outcomes, but you get a lot of variability in a system at that point. You create some disconnectness, if you will. We're not able to work smarter, and we're working maybe twice as hard. So I think where we're at now, if there were anybody that's currently on our literacy adoption committee that's spending time on this, they would tell you things like, now is a really good time for us to take advantage of where we're at with the foundational pieces, learn as much as we can about the research-based practices that are going to work really well for the kids that are in our context, right? And I do think even though we're balancing that state-level expectation with some local control elements, we have great experts in our system that know exactly what our kids need, and so we're using and tapping into that collective understanding to really pave a path toward what's going to happen five years from the future as a result of implementing this new resource. It's not just bringing the resource in and say, well, now we have this great tool. We have to spend as much time thinking about that instructional component, thinking about our assessment data, so that essentially you're keeping everything balanced and comprehensive. And I think those are some of the dynamics that are going to enable our system to be more adaptive to those changes. And I'll still come back to recognizing that every student is unique, every student has different potential that we want to help them realize as they're going through. So that asks a lot of our teachers, and as a result, the teachers need to really depend on a system that's aligned and coherent in response to what all those needs are.
And I would add back to the resource piece.
So that asks a lot of our teachers, and as a result, the teachers need to really depend on a system that's aligned and coherent in response to what all those needs are.
And I would add back to the resource piece. You talk about working smarter. The concept is that if we have five separate sites doing site-based literacy, which has been the practice in the past, it provides great autonomy for them to be able to respond to their data and their context or their conditions for learning. But the reality is, given the state context, as what Casey said, there's a different level of expectation now. Everyone's being measured in the same way, and everyone's expected to have a core curriculum and a supplemental curriculum that meets state expectations around the science of reading. So instead of working as five islands, now we can leverage our resources, which is our time, our focus, as well as our funding, to be able to come up with some solutions district-wide.
Bless you. Is there a balance? Because what I'm hearing is there's good about those islands, because it's more autonomous based on the kids, the children in that site. And now, what I just heard you say is, now we have leverage, because we can now have uniformity, and I'm, that's a serious question.
It's a great question. It's the pedagogy. It's what we consider the balance of the art and the science of teaching. And so it's that instructional component where we train teachers, we give them tools, and then they get to use the tools for their toolkit based on the needs of their students. Great question. That's where professional autonomy gets to come.
Because a child at Prairie Winds, a second grader at Prairie Winds may be learning then different than a classroom in, say, Bear Creek. So that's where you have that autonomy to, that local control of knowing who your parents are and your students are. And teaching is, it's a craft, right? It's not just, teaching isn't just a second grade teacher getting up there and teaching a child to count two apples, two sets of apples to equal four. It's also making sure that they are answering to, making sure that they're accountable and that their children are learning, and that they have, they have to know the eens and elbs and how to weave what the state expectations of them are and what their administrative expectations. And that's where that support comes in, from, from, from us sitting here at this table to, to the parent that is helping stuff Friday folders. That's where it becomes all of us as one team in this together.
Ben, or Teresa? Any questions, comments?
I don't think anything is critical, thank you. I just want to make, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the metaphor correctly. It seems to me the most variability would be in the length of pedagogical life. Is that fair to say?
It depends.
What does it depend on?
So we talked about curriculum-based assessments. So we talked about what we use within our own curriculum, or whether they're teacher-based assessments. So there actually can be great variability in some of our local data that we collect to try to compare, which sounds interesting, right? Because that's, that's why we use national data comparison like MAP and NWA, which is nationally normed, to determine whether or not the teacher-created or curriculum-based assessments actually are measuring the same thing.
And we are using generally the same assessments year to year, yeah?
Not always. In terms of the state testing and our national, nationally-normed testing, yes. But there is a level of variability within even how that data is interpreted based on whether it's compared to a standard or compared to other students. And we have to be really careful about how we compare that data.
Okay, and let me just tell you where my thinking is going, because for me, listening to everything I've heard this morning, the professional development collaboration that is part of the pedagogical process is what's most supportive, person to person, for that student than part of a teacher. And then working back the other way, that's also, I could be wrong in my thinking, but I'm thinking that's the most influential aspect of how the community is supporting our students in education.
So a high-quality teacher has one of the highest effect sizes for student learn, period. We also have to give them the right tools, the right training, and the right support to be able to be high, you know, that high-quality teacher. I see. You want to add anything, Casey?
So I guess in my metaphorical thinking, what I'm thinking when I look at this three-leg stool, is that that pedagogical, or pedagogy aspect is maybe beefier or wider, in a way that wouldn't necessarily tilt the stool, but it is, it is, in my thinking, and again, I could be biased or wrong, it's just a stronger component of, well, I guess I shouldn't use strength.
I would say that they're all critical, because you can't have, right?
Because this stool is going to fall over if you don't have three legs, I guess.
Right. I would also tell you that if teachers don't know what they're being, they're, the students are expected to learn, that, so I hear you on like, maybe it's wider, bigger, whatever.
Yeah, I understand the interplay. I'm just thinking that there's an aspect to the pedagogy that is so fundamental, that it's not, for me, not necessarily represented here. And it, it's neither here nor there. I'm just saying, I want, I just want to keep that in mind as we work ahead and think about how the community can best support.
Teresa, I was reminded this morning that what you just said is absolutely true by my wife, who's a teacher. She absolutely thinks this is the core of education and that that role is crucial. And I replied to her with, well, tell me, did you notice any difference in your students based on parental involvement? Or two parents and a family? And she absolutely did. So there's other factors besides that instruction, but it is crucial, there's no doubt. But all these other factors, and I asked this question earlier in another meeting, and that's why parents are involved with the evaluation, right?
Yeah, and I'm even thinking beyond parents, because I'm in the communication realm, as you know. So I'm thinking about in terms of the greater community and how to communicate the, some of these aspects, how we can best support public education in our district. And, you know, a lot of people don't necessarily connect with the assessments or even the curriculum, although there are people that are, are highly involved in some of those processes. But, but I'm just, and for me, I come from a teaching background, so the pedagogy is, is really a crux of what occurs between the content and the student, and getting to where, what Casey was saying earlier, you know, what kind of strong citizens and...
I don't think it's too bold of a statement to say, there is no substitute for a highly effective teacher that every one of our students can access. And I'll go a step further. You can have the most awesome curriculum with all the bells and whistles and put into the hands of a teacher who does not have the support or the training or the experience, the abilities, you fill in the blank, to actually leverage and implement that curriculum well, it doesn't matter. It really doesn't. But without it, it can make the job of a teacher extremely challenging. It could also lead to a great degree of variability in student experience, because if there's not some element of a standard that we're striving for, pretty much anything can go, right? Now, what I'd say is that our teachers are remarkably adept at taking whatever's available to them, and sometimes then some, to make sure that their kids are getting access to the very best that they can provide. There have been times in our system, and not just ours, I think it's every system in education, where those tools may not be the very sharpest or best tools available. And so we need to make sure that we're prioritizing a really strong toolset for each and every one of our teachers. But the teacher's skills, and quite honestly, the teacher's mindset and their beliefs and the assumptions and the values that they bring into a classroom environment, we all know, we've all experienced, teachers, and I think we have so many examples of this in District 38, that we're just very fortunate that our kids have teachers that not only make a difference in terms of the learning environment, but in terms of just creating connections and relationships that go that much further. And we want to make sure that that continues and that we get that much better at it, right? So where do we see growth or opportunities for improvement in our system? That's essentially what we need to continue to tune into. We do that partly because of how we're going to measure, how we're going to, you know, assess what students are actually learning as they go. Another really good way of understanding how it's working or not is just asking our kids and asking our families what their experiences are. We're doing that right now, right? Where we're saying, what's working for you and what's not? And guess what? Our teachers are front and center in making those shifts and adaptations based on what's working or what's not. So I think, yes, I would just come back to the teachers that we have in our system, that we are dependent upon every single one of them, bringing it every single day for every single one of our kids to achieve what we're trying to achieve.
By my, I also think that this is a prime, this particular discussion right here is also a good example of how each of these rocks coexist and need independent on each other. Number three, deepen our professional learning culture committed to continuous growth. You need that to ensure that number two is, is in part successful as well. So that speaks to exactly what, if I, what we were talking about too. You can have, part of being an effective teacher also is making sure that we have our, giving them the opportunities for, for continued growth and for professional development and, and sharpening their toolbox. I have a question.
Yes.
Can you decipher the difference or the similarities of a resource and a curriculum?
So a curriculum is a comprehensive set, if you look at it that way, me, basically of the what? So the learning, the essential learnings, the skills, the content that a student actually needs to be able to, to learn. A resource, though, it could be a component within a curriculum, or it could be an external component that we bring in, because there may be a gap within that. I would also, just to come back to your question about getting the community to understand the value of the teacher, I think is that board advocacy role that we were talking about, about how that relates to goal two, because people do know the value of a teacher in a classroom. And I think that that's that, how do we, it also aligns with that third goal, which is about retention, attracting and retaining high-quality educators in our system.
That might be a good segue to...
To which?
What?
To our final slide.
Great.
Are you good with that?
I'm fine. Well, the zooming in further, so basically, if you don't mind me just pointing out real quick, that's, that's basically the A, B, C, like the multiple pathways, for example, is E. That's just, that's, and then this handout goes a little bit more in-depth into the weeds of that. I'm particularly excited about multiple pathways. I think we've seen a lot of change, a lot of growth and expansion of that, even since I've been on the board.
Well, and I was going to walk through a brief example of our response to that stool, and just do a quick shout-out. Jess McAllister has been working tirelessly doing our CTE, as well as online, but really has made some incredible gains within our community in partnering through a bright light monumental impact. And it's great to see the work we're doing now and positively impact our kids.
And I didn't mean to derail us if that's what we wanted to do. I'm also trying to keep tabs on time. So I know we have a final slide that we're also trying to articulate with an opportunity to spend some thinking time on the board purpose and focus as it pertains to this goal. Do you want to speak a little bit more about that?
Yes. So here's where, here's where we sit. How, how can we ensure that all students are effectively prepared for future life success? So when we're looking at this goal, and we're thinking about this goal, Chris, to your point, how do we advocate? How do we ensure that, that we are staying on track and that we're accountable to this goal, to our community? And so if you notice, I have what is our board purpose as it applies to goal two, and word focus, something we can look at. And this is where, this is why I'm excited that this is in a work session. I know this takes a long time, but I think it's important that we are engaging in these discussions, particularly this goal right now. As a board, we're responsible for policy and budget. We're responsible for being accountable to make sure our grant allocation is, is being appropriately used. We're responsible for advocacy. How do we make sure that the district and stakeholders are standing alongside each other in a shared vision and, and shared support? We're responsible for compliance and accountability. Some of our legal duties, this, again, I'm going to refer back to our leadership workbook that Casby's put together. And some of the duties that a board must, a board of education must follow is providing an in-service program for district teachers, including mandatory reporting obligations, educating children with disabilities, requiring development of student individual career and academic plans, which is the ICAP. So we're still responsible legally for things like determining what our educational programs are. We do vote on our curriculum and our resources. And curriculum and resources are a very high-ticket item. You know, our, we have, eighty percent of our budget is in our staff. But another high-ticket piece of that is ensuring that our curriculum is, is relevant and effective. And so when we see our curriculum review, there's things we as a board can, can be advocating on of, this is what our curriculum is, and this is where, why a curriculum is being reviewed. But what is our strategic vision going forward with this, with this goal? How do we see ourselves engaged in this goal?
Well, I have a couple of thoughts I'd like to share. So I have a friend that lives in Shanghai, and we communicate frequently. And I had the chance to ask them about education, about religion, about personal aspects of life in a communist regime. The state controls both education and religion. All religions, all education have to conform to the state. That state's communist. And they use those institutions of learning or institutions of belief to try and control the population. I'm not saying that's where we are. That's one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum is freedom. I think of Little House on the Prairie, the schoolhouse of one teacher and all the kids. They had freedom, but they had limited resources, and so they did what they could with what they had. I don't even know what made the teacher qualified to be the teacher, but, you know, that's another time. So now we live in this time where we, we, we spent considerable time on the concept of equity and bias and, you know, treating each other fairly, et cetera. I've had parents ask me or tell me that they don't like public education because they believe the public education creates a bias in their kids that they may not agree with. I'm not saying that's everyone, I'm just putting it out here, because I've heard of it often. For example, why do we have charter schools? Why do we have choice, right? Why do we have school choice? Because it's the assessment that is being done, it's being done by the parents. They enroll their children based on their assessment of what the education process is yielding. In your assessment model, I think you're really just focused on the academic achievement, the growth. But these other factors are real. I would like to know how Lewis Moore School District 38 intends to, I don't want to use the word market, because everybody's going to think that's business sense or we're selling something. But how do we present, how do we communicate with our community the core values, the intentional purpose of educating kids so that they can look at all sides of issues? That they can truly not be trained to a particular religion or to a particular ideology, but that they actually can look at all objectively and consider it for themselves and let the family determine that other leanings, if you will. This needs to be a part of what we're doing here, in my opinion, because this is common in the community. This is not like, I just thought this up overnight. I hear this all the time. I hear this all the time. And I just would like us to look at your expertise and how do we bridge your expertise, which is awesome, but how do we bridge that so that we can communicate? Because I think Teresa hit it really strongly when she said, we, you know, how do we communicate this? That becomes a key part of the board's role is how do we, how do you, if you can educate us and we can align on that strategic communication and focus, well then, with the community will hair, is what I believe. I don't know if that's answering your question Tiffany, but that's what my thoughts were as we had this conversation.
Can I follow on? Can you go back to the shared vision to learn? So I think that this is key, Chris, to what you're talking about, as I understand it or as my mind's putting it together. Because I don't see anything in this vision for student learning that would be divisive. I think that, but at the development, this is the first time I've seen this slide today. But my thought is, it says shared vision, but we have to know who it's shared by now and we have to have some sort of collaborative communicative process in our community so that maybe not everyone will share this vision, but most would. Or, or we could get feedback to say, you know what, I don't share that vision because of X, Y, and Z, and then we have that conversation and maybe we, we change things or we have more conversations so that we come to a shared vision. But it's only a shared vision if it's shared, is the key. And so when you first put this up here, that's exactly where my mind went, like, whose shared vision is this, you know? And I don't mean that as a, as a detriment or anything, I just think that's sort of a key point, especially in terms of communicating, we have to have a collaborative process, a constant collaborative process in the community in order to create that. Because this could change in fifty years, it may be different and obviously our board won't be here, but what we're thinking about is a long-term strategic plan to frame things so that conversations can continue. That's, so I don't know if that's helpful, but I, I guess I'm agreeing with you.
No, and I totally agree with what you're bringing up because it is, whose shared vision is this, right? That's a great, that's a great question.
Great question.
And I think it should be part of the board's role to try and get the community input to make sure that it is truly a shared vision generally, because there will be exceptions. Because not every child, I have a number of them and I can't believe where they come from, some of them are so amazing, they can't be mine. And they're all unique, so you're, I know what your teachers are feeling, but with twenty or thirty kids, they're all very unique. They're not all designed or wired or whatever you wanna call this. I'm sorry if I'm offending anybody with my words, but they're not all going to college. And those are parents who kind of know that, look at the education model and if it's not shared, is there an option here? And it doesn't say anything that it says everybody's going to college. I get that, but at the same time, we're serving our community. And so how many of our children won't go to college? I'm just using that as an example of, of your point about it being truly shared. I think that's where we can bring feedback from the community to really help.
Sure. And then also, I think it's, I think as a board, we need to consider that we are representatives of our stakeholders and we are in a leadership position. And we've all been here for a while, so we have input that we can, can add as in our leadership positions and in our representative positions that can also be helpful moving forward as well.
I would, so when, when we talk about where, where we stand as leaders too in our role, I think another piece of that is how are we advocating? We, we are a local control state, so how are we advocating for our students, for our D38 students, for our D38 families and teachers and community? The advocacy level goes up and down. To advocate for policymakers, that then we, we may be on a path and then we have two sleeper bills that are snuck in and now all of a sudden, we've bought curriculum and now two sleeper bills have passed and now here we are starting at square one again. So the advocacy piece goes both ways as well. And I just, I'd add one more thought. I completely agree, that's a great question of what is our shared vision? So perhaps a place to start with is what, what can we all agree on and share? Could we all agree on that we wanna ensure that our children are prepared for future life success? Now, we may not all agree on what does that success look like, we may not all agree on how do we get there, but can we find the foundation of what we can all come to the same, a similar conclusion on?
Well, what the education system prepares the children to be able to deal with, because life is diverse. We talked about it getting more complex through time and grades, or does it, it doesn't get different? Real life, when we're adults, it gets more complex. And if this is really about lifelong learning, I don't care what career path you follow, learning has, I mean, for me personally, my way of assessing this is did every child leave his school system loving to learn? And that would be ideal, but that's just me.
So I love those vision, the additional vision questions that, that were posted. What, how will we know when they've learned and what do we want our students to learn? What, what will we do when they do? And what will we do when they have not yet? So those are good foundation questions to start with when we're talking to and, and advocating for our community and our kids.
So last year, we, the last two years in fact, we campaigned for bonds. What if we campaigned for education? Could we, you know, present this so that the community really understands it? We go out and share with them and have these listening, on learning events, because this is the meat and potatoes in my mind. And I would like to suggest that as a board that we consider, how do we campaign for our education system? How do we support the education system in campaigning for what you do? Now, when I say campaigning, I want feedback. I mean, campaign for feedback, for a shared vision, isn't that, I really like that idea, let's campaign for a shared vision for our education model.
Well, it makes it much easier to do if the community is oriented and understands what the shared vision is. And then if and when we go to the community to, with a specific task, then that foundation is laid or in I U T O, it would be continuously laid so that they, you know, there might be, there might be clarification of specificity of that task, but all in all, the basis would be there in the community in terms of supporting.
Dr. Benton, what do you think of our discussion?
I think that it's a great conversation because all of the things that you were talking about are the things that we're supposed to be doing to be able to create the components that are laid out in, in the prior district vision that was developed and then the Y statement, which is basically what those are a combination of. I think what's most interesting is when we talk about, we're talking big picture, whole district, and every time you talk to an individual community member, you have to come at it from their experience and their perspective. If we can figure out how to bridge their experience and their perspective with what our hope and desire is for the whole system, then I think absolutely, that'd be phenomenal.
So let me ask you this question. If we did that, do you believe that a community member has the ability to influence the shared vision?
I believe that every community member has the, has the ability to influence the shared vision.
Good, that, that's what I would hope for. That's what I think they hold for, right?
That's the value of public education and local control, is that you tailor your educational, what you're providing to meet the needs of your community and to help define community, but yes.
And how is this board supporting that?
Are you asking me? I do think it's through getting a level of understanding. And you said, you know, can you educate us enough to be able to go out and talk about that shared vision and talk about? Because they are gonna come at it from their own perspective, they're gonna come at it from what their experience has been within our system or within education as a whole, and that's not necessarily the same, right? So I think if we can, would you say, school you up? Is that what we said? To be able to have some, some of those
A lifelong learner.
Yes, sure, you have a level of learning, which is great. But I, I think that that's a great opportunity for us to engage our community. And that, and I mean community, broad community too. I think it's also, it's not only Lewis Moore School District, it's the region, it's the state.
Well, I just, I would just echo what I heard Teresa say, and that is, you know, there will come a time when we'll go to the community board and ask, but I don't think we should prohibit ourselves from going to the community just for the sake of collaboration. No ask, other than their input, their feedback.
Which is exactly what we did when we brought forward the new graduation requirements that we asked the board to adopt. We went out and we asked the community, what do you value for a graduate right now? And here are our current expectations, and we're asking you, what do you think about that? And resounding feedback came around not enough math, not enough world language, technology, you know, personal finance. That's why those graduation requirements from our local board look different for students with the idea that we should be meeting the needs of our community.
That's a, that's a great example. One of the things I get asked often sitting on the board is, you know what we need? We need them to teach our kids a personal finance class. And I always get to say, funny you should say that. Back five or six years ago, I remember the district campaigning strongly and going to every dis, every building multiple times and having multiple feedback groups. And from that discussion out of the community came, our kids need a financial class before graduating. And so that is one of our graduation requirements here in D38. It's not a state requirement, it's a D38 value.
So as a work session, I think what we've done is sort of opened the envelope a bit just to look inside and get a feel for this. So in our upcoming board meeting, you know, I would like, this is my input only, but what I'd like to see is a plan of community engagement on education. It's a, you know, whether it's at the sites, the school sites, listening, learning, and we've got lots of experiences and lots of examples to follow, but I, this should always, this should be a continuous process, you know, in my mind. I'd like to see if the school admin can determine the best way to do that. And I know that we have to get through COVID, I'm not trying to say we have to do this next month. But I would like to see the board itself in a position to advocate for the public education system that you are delivering and be able to listen and learn from our community so it becomes a shared vision. That should be, in my mind, our number one goal in this big round is a shared vision. Teresa, what do you think?
I think I'm on, there we go. Yeah, and I think that for me, the takeaway is, and I think it could be also possibly a shared takeaway in the community to have components of interaction and feedback based on this metaphor possibly, if we wanted to go that route. Because I had never thought about assessment being a supportive component necessarily of the professional development and the collaborative process of the teachers. I mean, I, I've just never seen it drawn up this way, so it's helpful, is what I'm saying. So it could be helpful to a number of people. But just having some form of discussion, I don't know what that looks like with COVID in play this year.
And no rush on that either, I think we should take the time to do it safely.
Right. Safely and strategically, in, in a way that's truly collaborative, where we can get some, some feedback and, yeah, so I'll stop there. But yeah, I think I've gotta mull over this.
It's a good work session.
Yeah.
Makes you think it's a good work session.
So to add to your mulling, it's not just assessment on, on the metrics.
Yes.
So that's the other piece that makes it even more complex, right? So when there's not a court of test, what's the measure? And the multiple pathways conversation has a great opportunity to discuss community-based metrics that drives what we offer and why we offer it and programming and so.
And I wouldn't mind getting into those weeds at some point if we, you know, but, I mean, No, not right now. No, not right now. But that would be, or be vicious, the conversation between you and me, but it does all add to my understanding as one board member, I'm not putting that onus on my fellow board members, but if anybody else is interested, we could set something like that up just so we have a greater understanding because ultimately, I want to be able to answer any community member's questions if I can.
Well, let's, let's put it on a future work session, because it is, what you're talking about is very valuable. And we've had elements in the past, I've seen data analysis, a real focused look at overall assessment would be phenomenal.
Can I, can I make a suggestion on that also? I think engaging with and involving our members of our district advisory and accountability committee could be helpful in that engagement as well. Because those are members also that have to bring to us as a board and bring to each other what their unified improvement plan is. And that's base that talks about that assessment piece. And so what we see often is, for example, special education and how do we, how do we shrink that gap with those students? So that is an opportunity, that's just one example that, of the weeds.
Right.
But my point is, that would be a good resource to, to engage with those folks and have those folks get involved in this engagement process too.
Right, and I, it doesn't have to be a completely in the weeds conversation. I mean, I know from CAC and GEL and all those meetings that I sit in on, how this functions. I'm just saying from the district perspective, you know, sort of a umbrella conversation of that, it's helpful.
I also wanna start using the word exceptional learners. Or learning differences.
Beth, did you have anything you wanted to ask about? All right, thank you. So I just have one last thought on this subject, and that is, I would like to see a compare and contrast for the London Academy, Three Legged Stool in the district, if there is any differences.
What do you mean?
I'd like to know if there's differences.
In terms of educational approach?
Yeah. Whether it's instructional, curriculum, I mean, there's obviously some differences that I'm not gonna say or spell them out, but they're, they exist.
There, yeah, the philosophy piece in terms of the approach, yes. I would say though, that the, the concept of the stool itself is a part of each.
No, I, I, what do you call this? The metaphor is the same, I got that. What's the differences within the metaphors? Because I think it's useful for everyone to understand what those differences are. And I'd like to see this presentation from them, in fact, at some point, but no rush, don't get me wrong, but I'd just like to see it because I'd also like to see a compare and contrast, how we're doing compared to Cheyenne Mountain, who's ranked number one. Because I'm always interested in being ranked better than Cheyenne Mountain, so that you get the point I'm making, right? This peer review, if you will, right? Should be a part of our assessment of our system, not the child necessarily, would be.
Yeah, you're, you're asking for a more, a broader comparison, not an individualized comparison.
So as D38, how are we doing? We have two philosophies within our school system, but then we have the 20 and the others. I'd like to see how we, how we compare. I'd like to understand those differences if I could, because that's, you know, rail drivers tell me all the time, we moved here because of your school system. Why is that? They never have an answer, they just say, well, we heard it's great.
I would tell you, just off the top of my head, one of the key differences, we can, we can pull unified improvement plans and assessment data to be able to compare curriculum as well as assessment metrics. The piece that's gonna be challenging to compare with other districts is the instructional component. The other piece will also be some of the foundational layers of what their local expectations are that we may or may not be curating. So there's some capacity to.
Peer review is always difficult, I get it, I get it. And it's interesting that the, the leg that Teresa pointed out has been the broadest of the, is the one that's the hardest to assess.
The art.
The art. But we should try, just because it's difficult doesn't mean we should try. And in my mind, it's no different than doing a financial comparison from one district to another. It's just another aspect. It's just another aspect of our education system. Thank you. Any other last questions, comments, before we move on? Dr. Ben, Dr. Summers, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was very informative.
And thanks, Mrs. Upchurch.
Yeah, thank you, Tiffany, for the extra time and effort to bring that forward. Now, you've done two, right?
Yep. But we're not done.
I know, you're about to be up again here on our next section, which is Strategic Plan Update on Forging Strong Community Relations and Foster Effective Communication, our Goal Number Five.
Thank you for working it out. So I'm just flipping through the slides from last Monday's board meeting. And we're just going to start on this slide that says, number five, Our Guide to Action, The Process. How do we best forge strong community relationships and foster effective communication? I think Tiffany and I agree. Tell me if you disagree with what I say. But I think that we agree that this is one of the slides that distills a lot of our conversations around this topic. And this is an appropriate segue from our last conversation just now, because so much resides in the communication and the feedback. Communication in both directions, both to our community and from our community, and how we then utilize that to forge stronger relationships. So I know I didn't spend a lot of time on this slide last Monday, so I wanted everybody to have a chance to look at it again and then would appreciate some feedback on that or some thoughts based on the presentation from last Monday.
So I can go up to the light board and start writing the brainstorm?
Sure, so I guess one maybe actionable place to start is, is there anything here that resonates with you as a board member or with us as a board? And/or is there something that does not resonate that would be another?
Well, I can start.
Go ahead.
So just as we were just talking about having meetings at various school sites, and we've talked about this, this is a new idea. We're just waiting, frankly, until we have the freedom of the virus to do so. But I could see having meetings at every school site. And I would say, this discussion we just had about the education process, and that included instructional, and then financial. To me, those are the two big rocks.
Yeah, you can take aspects of the other four.
Because they fit into these. So if it's instruction and training and development of personnel, it's part of the education process, and capacity, all the other things that we talked about. So communication is that third element, right? So in my mind, what we're really talking about, I'm oversimplifying, but from where I'm sitting right now, I look at it as, how do we communicate as a board? What is our, not our philosophy, not just our philosophy, but how do we do it? What is the implementation plan? I think that's what you're asking for here today. And within that, the things that I believe the community could give us the best feedback on is the financial results of everything we're doing and the education results of everything we're doing. Fitting within the education, all three of those legs. So instructional, curriculum, assessment. And under financial, you know, obviously, we have to look at capacity, our accounting students, our forecast, all of those things fit there. And then how do we do this? So, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. And then what came to mind is what Matt mentioned, that the meeting was that one of the difficulties we've had is reaching stakeholders who don't have necessarily direct ties. So I think that's a large part of the how. And I think the community meetings are a good idea in the future. It's how, but again, you could go down that rabbit hole and say, well, how do you get people to the meetings? Or how do you engage them in a way that they're able to want and/or get to the meetings physically, so.
One goal I have in these communication processes after, you know, learning for a couple of years is not to go ask. I would rather actually have a communication dialogue, a constant communication dialogue between the board and the community and the administration, or the bridge, that we can actually get to the point where the community starts saying, why don't you guys do this in order to achieve that? Whether it's financial, educational, it doesn't matter, right? That we actually become that bridge of the community to this. We get to spend all this time with these wonderful people, but I don't know that we're spending as much time as we should with the community. And that's what I'd like to balance out in my mind. That's where my mind is. Now, we have our restrictions today, but that will end. I don't know when, but it's going to end. And as it ends, I would like to hit the ground running with the plan.
So to say, how do we motivate engagement, is that an accurate question?
Well, we have to give them opportunity for engagement, right? So I think we, I think that's where it's incumbent on the board to devise our communication strategy.
I think creating opportunity and also leverage the opportunities that are already there.
I heard earlier about DACH, for example. That reaches a bigger group at just one element. I think we should look at it comprehensively, if I'm suggesting. Matt, any thoughts on this discussion, the communication strategy?
I appreciate the criticism, frankly, for the fact that the district committee doesn't have a little bit harder time with the community. So I'm going to try to log out online and see if I have any success in doing that as well.
Okay, well, we've assigned you six ideas already, so. Just kidding.
So I think, if you don't mind me sharing, one of the things we can start, once, there are some safe things we can do to create opportunity. We can even do virtual town halls. We talked about, I think we also need to, when we talk about creating opportunity and motivating engagement, we have various stakeholders. So engaging with our students, and this is part of when we talked about our Goal Five on relationship and connectivity. One of the things we talked about with that is tailoring that. And what that means to me is, I'm not going to have a discussion with a, when I'm talking to a student about our resources or our curriculum or our classes, that discussion is probably going to go different than somebody who I'm going to talk to about, you know, somebody who's interested in what is our building capacity? Or what is our, just trying to think of something off the top of my head. And in other words, our engagement with our student and engagement with a grandparent in the community or an engagement with our administration versus an engagement with a parent. Those are all engagements that are going to probably look differently because there's different interests in that engagement. Even if it's the same topic, the interest flow may be different. So do we need to have engagements that are more geared toward different stakeholders?
Absolutely. We did get a text that we need to speak up. So if you can't keep this as close to your mouth as possible. And secondly, I would like to ask the admin as a whole to participate in this conversation. And in order to do so, you're going to have to come up to the mic. But I'd like each one of you to weigh in on what we're talking about, because we can't do this without you. I mean, we really need to understand, as I was saying to Dr. Ben, I need to understand what I'm talking about before I can engage with the community. So any contribution you can make here would be very welcome.
You want to go out to the back of the hall, or?
I'm going to just take the mic to them. This is a pedagogical strategy. This physical.
Movement?
Location and proximity to our students. We'll start with Mr. Foster.
So we're discussing engaging the community.
Yes.
Communication, right?
Stakeholders.
So I think we've done so through some electronic means, which would get around the COVID restrictions, the group limitations. You know, we've had the, Julie, help me out.
Thought exchange.
Thought exchange, thank you, Lori. Lori was Julie, Julie was Lori. We've had thought exchange, we've had some other methods that allow more contributions from community members throughout. However, I don't think anything can replace the old-fashioned, in-person meetings.
And Mr. Foster, would you, in terms of in-person meetings, which one of these components does an in-person meeting most connect with?
In my mind?
Yeah.
Relationship and trust. It's hard to build relationship and trust over an online medium.
I'm just going to address one issue that I feel passionately about amidst a bunch of them. But I think it's imperative that instead of expecting people to come to us, the district, that we need to go to them and be where they're at. I think the town halls that you did, Chris, was a good move in that direction around the election last year, because it wasn't here. And I kind of think we need to do some stuff offsite and go where other people are and interject ourselves there.
And Julie, that, to me, speaks to presence, but are you thinking in terms of any other?
I do think it's presence, I also think it's connection, because I think it's paying attention to people who aren't connected here and are going, why would I go there?
Yeah, and I would second what Julie had to say about going to the community. And maybe there's a way to connect with those people at an event that they're already at. You know, whether that's a sporting event or something like that, kind of making it so that they're not having to take an extra evening or weekend outside of that to be part of this. Because I think that's a lot of the reason why community members may not participate. It's just they've got their own lives, and while they may have opinions and have feedback, they don't want to spend the time taking another evening away from their family or something like that. And so if there's a way to, you know, coordinate that with something that they're already at. And I think that that would really fall into, again, the presence and connection aspect.
And I just want to add, I think what you're speaking about, community members, what comes to mind for me is also our business partners and other organizations in the community, that if we as a board or board members are at those functions as well, I think that can be highly impactful.
Yes, absolutely. So would you say that also, when I think of the communication piece, what I think of is making the connection convenient for them? Sorry.
One of the pieces that also comes to mind is, think about how much our community does support our schools. You know, there's an Arlene's Beans night, right, at the middle school. So not just going to community or civic groups, like Tyre Lakes Women's Club and the Palanies. And I know there's a ton of local, you know, Monument Archips. And we work with the Chamber of Commerce through our CTE programming, Tyre Lakes Cares. We have a lot of entities already that have boards that help also facilitate their communication and strategy. Be interesting if we could sync up with that. But also going to where the community actually goes to support our schools, because those are the people who are probably more willing to engage in a conversation about what we're doing. So that's just another, we do a ton of those fundraiser nights, right? And so it'd be a great opportunity to be there and have a conversation with people.
It may be more personal. I mean, I know we've recognized a lot of those entities over the years and, you know, presented them with thanks at a board meeting or something. But again, that's asking them to come to us, whereas if we show up. Are you suggesting, like, we show up at Arlene's Beans on a give back night?
I am.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea.
I'm also saying that when it comes to the Tyre Lakes Board or Tyre Lakes Cares, how do our missions and visions align with our interests in our community? So finding connection points with our own entities that already exist here, because those are people who are already pouring into the community, giving back, and are very invested with their time, talent, and resources. So just another thought. That's one of the reasons we went out to over any of those types of groups when we did our revisions to our graduation expectations. We tapped into some of those groups as well.
Yeah, I want to comment that I want to expand on the voice, and I think it makes a lot of sense. And it's hard to do during COVID. But you guys have been very good at just being pleasant, actively events. So it doesn't need to be a formal communication event where we schedule something separately. You can have people come to the town hall or a board meeting, but football games and choir concerts and theater shows and convocation with staff. Those things that you guys have been exceptional there up until prior to March have been examples of opportunities to connect and communicate. I can tell you from the faculty and the staff standpoint, that would be really important, to see you present and supporting them when it's appropriate and available. And I think you guys do a really good job of that, at least prior to March, when we were all doing those things. The thought I also want to add to this is, I think, in order to develop some trust and confidence as I look at those two columns, is we also need to be cautious in finding balance in the message that we're receiving. And it's very easy, I think, to be influenced by a small group of folks who are quite vocal, very involved. And that can go in lots of different directions. So I don't need judgment on what they're saying or who they are. But if we are responding to a minority group or a minority voice who happens to be very involved and very active, we may end up in the wrong direction. And I think it's something we need to just be cognizant of and cautious about in ensuring that we have all the voices of the really vocal and responsive. I can tell you, from my experience with CAC, it's the same phases just about every meeting. And if that were the only message that we responded to, it might send us in a direction that isn't as comprehensive as we'd like. So I know I personally need to make those extra efforts to ensure that the minority or the quiet voices are also backed into our direction.
Dennis, anything?
I was walking around when the question was asked, but I think I figured it out based on the answers. I think just what you're doing right now with the informative piece, not that we're expecting mastery of knowledge of all the five building blocks, but I know it's been beneficial just to me, to your today's presentation and to others. And I think that will allow me to answer. And obviously, for you guys, to answer questions better out in the community as we are being more, as you are being more present.
So I'll just try to bring a little bit of restatement to the conversation.
My chicken scratch?
Yeah, it looks great. I don't necessarily have anything different to add. I think what's on my mind right now, and we had a really productive dialogue in Goal Two that is continuing to stay with me in this specific goal that we're talking about, seeing the intersectionality, if you will, of why do we do any of this? And what's most important? And Chris, I think when you said a continuous collaborative dialogue that invites two-way communication, engaging as best we can every and any member of our community or anyone that's interested, right? We don't want to force anyone to do anything they don't want to do, but I think a lot of people are. I think we have to acknowledge the value of that because we've touched on presence, connection, relationship, trust, and then confidence at the very top of the staircase, if you will. It just makes me wonder how confident is our community at large in our ability as a school system to deliver on our promise of what education represents for each and every one of our kids? And I don't want to speak for anybody out of turn. I think we do a really good job as a whole of that. I just believe that that's what makes D38 what it already is. But we never want to rest on our laurels. We never want to look at that and say we've arrived and that there's never an opportunity to continue to grow because the reality is every student represents the hope, the potential, the dreams, the aspirations that they have. So the work is always about continuing to move forward and seeing what challenges and opportunities that we're currently dealing with. For example, in COVID, COVID is just the most recent of multiple challenges. Now, it's a really unique one. It's one that I don't think we've had a lot of practice with, although each and every day I feel like we are doing that right now. I would love for us to continue to look at ways to not to not allow COVID to get in the way of what these goals really are, right? So even if it means right now, everything that we can do in person to the extent possible, we strive to do. But if we can't do a lot in person, and we're gonna give a quick little update on this a little bit later before the end of the meeting, if we can do something virtually, what does that look like? And even if it's something that creates even a potential of an opportunity to talk about the things that are most important in our system, I think that's time well spent. I think there's a value to add to that. And I also think it's important for us to continue to demonstrate what is it that we are listening to and how do we respond, right? Just like when we're talking about a shared vision, only being as good as our ability to actually implement it, right? Otherwise, that's just a dream without those actions. I want to make sure that the communication that's coming our way is not just, well, thank you, that was nice to hear. It's what does that mean for us? What are the implications of that feedback? And how do we, to the question earlier, make sure that every community member can see themselves in a shared vision or in a continuous process of growth and change? So there's a lot that I feel like we are doing well that demonstrates that confidence. And there's also elements that I know we can get really, we can get a lot better at. And unfortunately, I think our measures previously have been a function of what happens when there's a mill or a bond on the ballot. And that's, there is a bottom line to that. And there's a lot that I think a no vote with respect to whatever the no vote is on that can tell us. But somehow along the way, because right now, exactly what you guys said, we're not asking for something on a ballot. What we're just trying to do is continue to strengthen the engagement and the collaborative process that we're engaged in together. So I would encourage us to find ways to continue to do what we can in spite of the challenges and the constraints that we're working in. And I really appreciate that we're continuing to give more time and energy on these, not just these goals on paper, but how do we live them, how do we put them into practice? And then Mike will go back to its own.
Thanks. I really, I think we really appreciate everyone's input. It's really helpful. I heard some new things that we haven't even touched on in previous conversations yet. I think that where I'm going, and Tiffany, you and I can work on this possibly in the next number of weeks. But measures of success is a tricky aspect of this communication goal. I'm still mulling that. I guess I'm mulling a few things. But I think that what I'd like to suggest is that Tiffany and I come back to the board on, I'm not sure it would be another working session, agenda item in a month or two, and with a little more of a granular action plan, if you will, as to what we think moving forward will be most helpful based on everything we've heard. And I think we'll be compiling stuff in the future weeks as well. So I just wanted to have a, where are we going with this? Instead of just having an end. So I don't know. Yeah, this is just the beginning. I meant what I said last week when I said we are in the nascent stage because as we've dug deeper, every layer, you realize the complexity of this and how it's intertwined with the others. And I, it's important.
You know, by the way, Matt had to get up. He had a hearing he had to go to. So they're just the three of us now. But let me just add this, that, you know, one of the things I heard here was that it would be nice if we had the elevator speech. If, well, instead of the big hour and a half, two-hour deliberative session, right? It would be nice just to know, what's the talking points around assessment? What's the talking points around the instructional philosophy? What's the talking points? You know, just so that we're understanding what it is, so that what we're out about, if anybody brings up something, we don't go out and sell it. We're just there to answer the questions, right? So it would be nice to have the, what do you call it? Just the, I think is the word, talking points. However, you know, it's our communication about these important subjects, right? And that we have some clarity of understanding what they are so that we can then engage with a community member and really understand what they're saying to us. I think that would be one of the things that we have to to get in place. And that's really on you, Dr. Sommers, to help us so we know what those are in these, in the big rocks.
Absolutely.
I think something also that I'd like to see us work on capturing is that communication to our silent community members, our silent stakeholders, the ones that aren't getting out and coming to events, no matter even, we go to, how do we get to them? How do we get in their home? Not in their home physically, but how do we get and reach them? And how do we hear back from those individuals? Somebody who lives out in Walden, who's just enjoying life, enjoying retirement, watching her grandkids grow. How do we communicate back and forth to ensure that they know what a great district we are? And that we're hearing them?
You know, unfortunately, if I went up to their house to knock on their door and ask them, they may not love me there. But when I came in last night, some of them slammed the door in my face anyway.
But we can provide multiple and/or redundant opportunity.
Right. OCN, having, we discussed, for example, mailers, that was some of the feedback that was received years ago from our community is that they would like to see information, facts, data. What are the great things that we're doing? Maybe the three-legged stool is a good piece to share, for example. With no strings attached, no end goal, just here's who we are.
There's no ask, this is just good information.
Right.
Yeah, we should make sure we budget for that. You know, it's not, you know, in other words, we're campaigning or communicating all the time. And so it should be an ongoing, it shouldn't be just when there's a mob or hello. It should just be an ongoing line item in our budget to communicate. Because I agree with you, Tiffany, that, you know, you get the mailer. I read those things. Now, I would bet a lot of those who don't have a direct connection to the school, read them. There may be some that just chug up, but I suspect it's valuable.
Well, it's nine cents on, isn't the return on investment like nine cents for the mailer? Isn't that average what we got?
It cost more than that, but it was around 40 cents.
Okay.
Five thirty's.
Forty cents, okay.
But that includes postage, printing, design.
Everything.
It didn't include the.
And a part of what you're doing is the how, right? How do we do this? I don't see as many channels of communication as possible.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that that's the end all be all. I'm saying that is another brainstorming idea to toss out.
Agreed. Anything else?
Think we're good?
Awesome. Thank you very much, Tiffany and Teresa. This has been a really good board meeting, work session. In fact, I felt like that for the last couple of times. It feels like we're hitting the meat and potatoes pretty well. The next agenda item is update regarding the refinancing the general obligation bonds. Unfortunately, Ron's not here to support Shauna, so Shauna's gonna have to kind of do this solo today. But I know she's well prepared.
Okay, can everybody hear me good? Okay. So really what we're gonna talk about in regards to the bond refunding really is just the impact to the mill levy rates that will be coming up. So again, this presentation applies to the strategic plan, goal number four, ensuring effective asset management and efficient use of resources. So here is a projection over the next 10 years that the bonds are being paid off over. And so you'll notice the general fund mill rates right there, the total program at that 23.164. That is set for us. The voter-approved mill rate is based on the $4 million that was approved back in, somebody will have to give me that.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, thank you. And so that number just correlates to the $4 million. And then there's an abatement amount that stays pretty consistently right at that .139. So that'll give you the total general fund mill. And then we have the bond mill, which you will notice starts reducing in '21, '22 based on this projected bond refunding. So that mill reduces about .3 every year starting in 2021. So you'll see down that bottom line is that new bond mill rate. So then what we have here is the basically transferring those mill rates over to dollar figures. Again, based on that assessed valuation. This is based on a frozen assessed valuation just to keep things apples to apples and not dealing with, you know, that assessed valuation going up or down. So obviously, these are just projected numbers out, but you can hopefully visualize exactly where those dollars end up from one year to the next. And again, this is just the general fund. This is not, and this slide here does not relate to the bond itself. So then here is the bond fund projections. And you'll see the bond fund total based on the payout amounts for those, the three different bonds. And you'll see in, again, in 2021 where there is a reduction based on the refunding of that 2012B bond. And so again, that is allocated out fairly evenly over the next, over the nine years until the payoff. So just so you can kind of see how that plays out for the overall bond amount. So I know it's a lot of numbers.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay, so the 1.7 is assuming we do it this year.
Correct.
It could be up as high as 3.3 if we wait until next year or the year after.
If we wait until December of 2022, the projection, all things being equal, is the 3 million number, yes.
Based on current interest rates.
Correct.
So the question that Ron and you both asked us is, does it make sense that we go ahead and, you know, take the 1.7? Or do we wait next year and hope or gamble that interest rates are still where they have a benefit to us or not? What I like about this presentation is it really shows us every year what it hit, how it hits the taxpayer. So it's not a 1.7 million dollar hit next year. It actually doesn't even begin for two years. And then it spreads out over, what is it, nine years, seven years?
Correct, yes. So that is the cumulative.
Total.
Total, yes, that's correct.
Does that help you guys, that helped me a lot to understand this, what the impact is.
Yeah, no, it's helpful and I think it's helpful in terms of us, again, maybe communicating to other people what's going on. And I'm all, I don't feel comfortable gambling and waiting. I think that we have a bird in hand and we can save taxpayers money. I I'll stop there, my thought process changed. Just to be clear, but the 2012B bond is the Palmer Ridge, the initial Palmer Ridge bond, is that?
That's my understanding.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I've had some questions about that and I want to make sure I'm communicating that correctly as well.
So I want to try and make sure that I'm regurgitating this and it's all sinking in. So if we do, going with the guarantee that we know we can get right now, Chris, if I understood that correctly, you're saying it wouldn't kick in to taxpayer savings for two years? Is that right?
That's what I'm seeing here, the fiscal year 21, '22, so yes. So it won't impact this year's bond levy rate setting. It won't impact next year's, it would be the following year.
So if we
But that's true, no matter what we do, right?
Well, that's what I was gonna be, that was my follow-up because I want to make sure I understood that correctly. So even if we decided to hold off because we think or we're positive or we think that we will get more return on the best, return for the taxpayers if we wait, that still, that kicks in four years or still two years?
Well, first of all, Tiffany, let's go back. This is not guaranteed either. This is still dependent on what the interest rates are in December.
Sure.
This was based on an estimate from October on the survey. And so I don't even know if we're up or down on this estimate.
I guess my bigger question though is, would it still kick in two years? Or would, it could kick in two years from now because it would be a 20, if we waited until 2022, that means it wouldn't kick in for four years, is that?
No, that's not the case. So the reason that it's two years out is because that's the soonest that those bonds are callable.
Okay.
So if we do something now, they basically do the refinance, put the money into escrow and make the payments as required. And then in two years, they call those old bonds and then the real savings kicks in.
Okay.
So that's just the timing of when they're first callable.
Okay.
And that won't change.
Okay.
That's two years out, no matter what.
Okay. So now I understand that piece. And this is, obviously, I'm not a bond market type person. So I'm trying to understand now, this, I feel like I'm back to like when we were talking about goal number two. This is all me trying to understand in layman's. If interest rates go down or stay the same two years from now, it would be 3.3?
3.3.
How do we know it's 3.3?
A forecast model.
Okay. How accurate is that, those forecast models?
It's as accurate as your assumptions and that's driven by the interest rate. Otherwise, it's spot on. The only thing that's gonna change is the interest rate.
So it's not, is it, I guess what I'm getting at, is it like shaking a magic eight ball and? No, okay.
No, but I'm not gonna predict what they're gonna be far along next year.
Sure.
I have no idea. There's too many variables. I think why Ron and Shauna brought this to our attention is we're in a good situation. So should we take advantage of it? I think it's really that simple. One of his options was do nothing, right? It doesn't cause us any grief. We do forego the savings for our taxpayers. The other option was to wait, which is, I'm just gonna call it a gamble because I think it is, nobody can predict what they're gonna be. This, in December, whenever we get to that point. This, in December, whenever we get to that point, we will lock it in and say, that's what it is. And the question is, and we've not decided that today, we're just understanding, the question will be is, do we want to do that? And this layout, I think, helps us, it helps me be able to understand exactly what the impact is.
And then moving forward, is something we both on at the next board meeting?
We have to approve it in December or what? I don't know the time.
Well, I think we have.
We should have the official statement draft for approval, hopefully at the next board meeting, November 16?
Yeah, I was gonna say that's only a couple of weeks out.
Correct, yes.
You're on a good path.
We are on, we are on track for that as of right now. So yes, then you would vote on moving forward with this. So this is just more information to have in your pocket for that conversation in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, no, this is really helpful to have the year by year layout.
The other thing it does is it specifies the mill levy rates and bond levy. So now you have that information because that is set or officially signed up on in December.
December.
Anything else?
I'm good, thank you very much.
All right.
This is very helpful.
Thank you.
Actually, Shauna, one more thing. We do have a CAFR that will also be ready for review, draft.
Correct, yes.
CAFR at the November 16 meeting as well. We just wanted to call that out. So that's one more thing.
It's gonna be a big meeting.
Yeah.
Can you tell me what that acronym is?
Audit.
Yeah, audit report.
I kind of knew that, but I was, I don't think most people understood that. So we're gonna have an audit review in November?
You'll have the draft audit to review at the November board meeting, yes.
And will they be here, John Paul?
We have not confirmed that yet.
And they, they don't have to be, I guess, but it's really a...
They have it every year though.
Yeah, they have. So that would be our, would be...
Yes. Either that or they will be here for the December, which should be the finalized.
How close are you though?
I'm hoping to have a draft by the end of today or tomorrow at the latest.
So by the 16th, are they, are you gonna be 99% there?
I hope so.
Okay. My inclination would be to get them here in November if possible.
That's what I'm trying to do, yes.
Just wanted to make sure to call that out.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Thank you, Shauna.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Shauna.
Dr. Summers?
Okay, I'm gonna keep this super brief, but it's also a very high impact update in regards to where we sit as we are shifting from safe at home level... Excuse me, safe...
Tier.
Where do we, we're safer at? Safer at home level two, I'm so sorry.
Or yellow.
Or, or yellow. Okay, so here's, here's the short end of the story. Our numbers in El Paso County have drastically increased, like scary, to now an incidents rate that I think is sitting over 300 per 100,000 over the last 14 days. Our positivity rate is hovering around, I believe it's 8%. Great in Miami.
Eighty-two is exactly 341.
Okay, 341 and...
Eight point two.
Eight point two, thank you. Thank you for checking my numbers. The other thing, I just wanted to make sure that you all knew because I did not update you over the weekend with... There were seven cases, excuse me, eight cases, I believe, that occurred over just this past weekend. So I literally would have been texting you every other hour. We currently are sitting on seven positive student cases, four positive staff cases, which has created 273 current student quarantines, 25 current staff quarantines. Our year-to-date totals are sitting at 49 total cases and just under 700 total quarantines. So in other words, our uptick is, I think, to whatever degree that correlates to what's happening in the broader community, I believe it's a fair statement to say that we are seeing what was referred to as the fall uptick or second wave or whatever terminology you want to use. We have fortunately still been in the situation where we've not necessarily had to close school temporarily in any of our situations. However, as we're moving into level two, safer at home, which is now, it's orange or yellow, Julie? Safer at home level two is, is yellow. So the, the state and county is now taking us away from the levels and moving it into a color reference. So we're gonna send that update out to everybody. The other thing we're gonna reemphasize is the vast majority of our cases are happening outside of our schools. They're not being transmitted within school. Meaning, our outbreak situations have been very limited and schools continue to be one of the shiny examples, if you will, about how to make sure that we can mitigate virus transmission. But that does not preclude the virus from still having an impact on our kids and our staff. In many of these situations, they are a family member who is contracting and it's either being passed to a staff member or a student. I think our community is doing a really good job of staying home. We would remind both our staff and our families that if you are feeling symptomatic or unwell, please, please, please stay home. And we are gonna continue to do our part in making sure that we contact trace and partner closely with the health department around these issues. But continuing to stay the course around mask wearing, around monitoring our physical distancing, the same things that we've been doing this entire time, we have to continue to commit to that. My phone call last Friday with the county health department essentially reiterated the fact that there is no other way to deal with this right now. Every trick, so to speak, that we have available to us is what's already been in practice. But COVID fatigue is real. And I think that some of our folks, it's understandable. Everybody is kind of tired of everything that we have to do. But we have to continue to stay the course. So really, my update today is just a preview of what we're going to send a letter out to all staff and our community on later today. The official time shift of level one to level two or orange to yellow is at midnight tonight. But essentially, everything that we're doing right now continues to be some of the things that we continue to be able to do. There really isn't a drastic shift to our model unless we were to get into a situation where we're now safe at home and we have more of a state declared shutdown like we did in the spring. So I don't anticipate, at least right now. So I think that's about everything I wanted to make sure to touch on. Unless there was any questions that I could address.
I have one question and clarification. When is the COVID dashboard on the Louis Palmer site being updated?
I believe that'll be this evening or today.
No, Wednesday or Thursday.
It's Wednesday or Thursday.
So it's once a week on a Wednesday or Thursday? Okay, that's helpful, thanks.
Pardon me. Although the new numbers that I just gave you are hot off the press, so we may push those up just, I believe they're hot off the press. So we are gonna refer to these new numbers as we're also communicating this out. So just so you know, we try that.
Yeah, no, it's just come out in various communication and some other meetings I sat in. I think there's some confusion around that, but I don't know if there's a way to communicate when it's being updated that could be helpful.
I think on the website, there's actually an asterisk that says this is updated every...
Oh, good, I missed that myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that we have that dashboard. I think it shows transparency and, and it shows that we're all in this together also. Not all school districts are doing a dashboard like we're doing and updating it. So kudos to that. And also kudos to our communication with the health department. I know that you guys work very hard to stay in collaboration and communication. And from my perspective as a parent, that does help me because I see other schools and high schools and other school districts shutting down completely. And I see us pushing on forward as best we can. I definitely have, me and my kids and my family definitely are one of those that fall into that fatigue category. It's very tough. My one question to you is, with this update, do we have any stats or data on how many of these positive cases are showing up as hospitalizations or deaths in our community?
So again, to, to our knowledge, to date, we are not aware of any current students or staff members who have had to be hospitalized. There was one exception that I mentioned that was way early in the...
Spring.
Spring. That being said, we are aware of family members of students or staff members who are. So what I would say is, it doesn't take long for us to see how that impact is rippling out. I, I understand that's one of the questions that people have. We wouldn't communicate that publicly necessarily as now we have a hospitalization. But at the same time, while we're working through all of the difficulties of this, I do want to call out that there are definitely some families that we're aware of that they're, they're experiencing some significant element of how this is rippling out beyond what it looks like in our schools. If that makes sense, so... Yes.
Has the county yet offered to test our schools? Have they had any conversation around it? Because without testing, we are only seeing those who have symptoms. And this is clearly a virus that affects many of your population asymptomatic.
So what I can share there is that there is a recognition of how schools are obviously a hub of the community. That is not part of the current plan is to use schools as testing sites or to prioritize staff or students ahead of general community members for testing. The other thing is that doesn't necessarily stay consistent with what their recommendations are about who should be tested and when they should be tested. The only other thing I can add to that is that because of the prevalence of what the rate, positivity rate is looking like in our community, there is a testing site that is now in Monument. And do we know exactly where that's at and what... Bob?
It's down there.
It's down there.
Locked down, locked right. It's across from our main ground.
Okay, so, so it's, I don't have the exact address of the...
It's 811 North Santa Fe.
811 North Santa Fe.
Sorry, 25 Jefferson Street. Yes.
Okay.
As simple, there's a link on our COVID page, which is the little medical thing on the right navigation. You just hit the medical thing that sends you to all sorts of COVID info. Or you can go to louispalmer.org/covid. It's there.
All right, so I'm trying to repeat this for anyone that is watching. So it's on our website. We're gonna put it in the updated letter that we're sending out. The bottom line is there are more local testing sites that are available than what... Or this addition of a local testing site would be the county's response to the question of how is testing being prioritized in their system? It's not part of their current operational plan to use schools as testing sites.
What's the cost of a test?
That I don't know. I believe some of these testing sites are free.
I believe the test for the virus is free. If you do a antibody test, there's a cost.
I believe that's the case as well.
No cost, no referral.
No cost or referral, okay.
I'm just curious why they would consider just going to the schools once a week or once a month or something, testing? If you have an audience. I'm just curious. I'm trying to understand why we're using...
Chris, my best understanding of it is that the, the current plan does not include one of just, I hate to call it randomized testing or across-the-board testing. It's more of a, we're testing you when you have reason to believe you may have contracted a virus, not just blanket testing that tells us whether or not you do. So that's, that's my best understanding of the current operational approach. I also think it creates some dynamics that might be, for example, are you having to consent to testing? Are we saying that just because you're showing up to school that you're gonna be tested by virtue of being a student or a staff member? I want to be careful that we're not putting ourselves in that position. I don't know that the county would, at this point, have that as part of their mitigation.
They're not asking for my consent to tell me to stay home. So I'm just being a little rebellious here.
I hear you. I hear you.
I'm just being flat out. If I understand the virus right, based on now eight months of data, the impact on you is minimal, but they may be carriers, asymptomatic carriers.
That is correct.
And that's then the risk is where they may go and affect someone who is a vulnerable. And it's pretty clear from the data who's vulnerable, who's not. So the question comes back to, what are we doing to really stem the tide or control this if we're not testing broadly across the board, all of our students? Because if we're only testing those who feel bad, feel like they have symptoms, what are we missing? And it would throw their bottle out the window because you may have 30% positives instead of three.
Yeah, I want to be really clear not to try to answer that question on behalf of public health.
I can appreciate that.
I think your point is one that may be worth somebody from public health speaking to that. At the same time, what I continue to hear is that what the strategies are that we're continuing to implement are the ones that public health would continue to make sure that, that everyone is adhering to. And they're also saying that we're doing a really good job as a whole in schools, which I think is evidenced by the fact that we have done a really good job at containing the potential of any outbreaks. We've had, we've had a few, we've had our share of transmission that may have occurred within a school environment, even though it's hard to get down to 100% for sure that that was the case.
Given the constraints, you can give it, we're doing great.
I, I think generally speaking...
I just don't know if that's the necessary handle. I'm wondering, would you, would it be possible? And would you be interested in having someone from county health come to a board meeting and help us understand better what they're doing?
I was actually going to ask, can we make that request? I think it's a good idea.
Here's what I would like to do. I would propose this. I, I think it makes it, depending on who you're talking to in county health, that, that's a lot of what you have to keep in perspective based on who we're actually hearing from. Because to talk to the folks that are doing the contact tracing, the lead epidemiology work, I'm not sure that they necessarily are in a position to speak to some of the more system-wide decision points that are being made. And I don't know that we're gonna get somebody from public health that is necessarily going to be willing to disclose all of that in a public session.
Just as we are spending lots of time and effort to figure out our communication strategy, it would be nice if public health could actually communicate with this community because if they come to our board meeting, it's broadcast to the entire community.
Yeah, the other thing I want to be mindful of is their support across 15 districts, across the entire region, is, they're stretched, you know, obviously thin in many ways. So there may be a way to get to that essential information. If you would just allow me the chance to, and Rick and I, Rick being our official coordinator, let's kind of talk through some different strategies so that we can get to that essential information. I'm not saying that they would necessarily be opposed to it, but let's see what we can make, come together and I can follow up with you on that.
So for what it's worth, I think the reason that I would appreciate that is, I, I think I've got a grasp on understanding how we fit into what we have control over versus what we don't have control over. But there seems to be a lot of questions and different interpretations of, of what is our role, what is our responsibility? What is public health's role? What is their responsibility? What is the state versus... There's just so many components that I can have a conversation with somebody that I think is an expert and the next thing I know, I think I understand it and then I understand it differently. So I think it's helpful to have an expert to tell us or share out with us, here's our role, here's your role, here's where we are in our partnership, here's what...
Well, I think, I think we have two people who've been in communication with county health.
Agreed.
So it could just be that we need a conversation with Rick and Casey that's a little more in-depth and, and I think a lot of questions may be answered. in-depth, and I think a lot of questions may be answered. I'm not sure.
Here's what I can tell you. I'm very clear about what our role is and it isn't. So if I haven't made that more clear, I apologize. I can tell you what we can and what we can't do, okay? What I can't tell you is why their strategy is what it is.
Right.
I can't speak for a strategy that goes beyond the scope of our organization. But I can tell you, everything that we're doing is exactly what we can and should be doing right now. Everything that they're doing is really what they are capable of doing. There, what I get frustrated about sometimes, if I can share this, is there are mixed messages from time to time. And I'll give you a quick example, and it's not anybody's fault, but it's just because there's so much information that's out there. When we met with county health last Friday, and they said, "We will be moving into Level 2 Safer at Home as of this coming Wednesday," they also said, "Part of the criteria that we are changing for you as a result of the metric is group sports can have no more than 25 students in a cohort, or in a group that participates." And we were like, wait a minute, how does that affect what we're doing right now with football primarily? Because all our other sports are under 25, and really, football's the only sport that's still playing. Cheerleading is part of that, but our cheerleading squads are under 25 already. The bottom line with all of that is Chassa had already had a variance in place as a function of allowing us to have a season that we're playing in right now that allowed roster sizes to be under 50. So you had one bit of information that was telling you it's now moving to 25, and then the Chassa letter that was approved by the governor, and it was a variance, that really county health just didn't know, is what it amounted to. And once we shared that information with them and said, "Hey, this is the information we're working off of," they said, "Whoops, our fault, we didn't know about that letter. Now that we know it, you guys are still good with 50." Okay? Those are some of the things that end up happening in translation of guidelines, because there's how many different public health orders that continue to shift. For example, in this new public health order, they, I think, go a next step to call schools out as a critical business, which is why we're actually able to function a little bit more like a business where we're not necessarily having to adhere to limits of 10 or under for a personal gap. That's where it gets a little confusing. But in terms of understanding our role, we have an obligation to ensure that we're keeping our kids and our staff and our community as safe as possible. How we go about doing that, which we are doing right now, we're absolutely capable of doing. Public health cannot come in and tell me that you can't be in wholly 100% in-person order. They don't have that ability. They can advise, and they can recommend, and they can say, "Well, we take this," or maybe something else, but at the end of the day, we still have the obligation to make that call. Okay? Those are the things that, it's very clear in my mind, what is for us to decide and what is not. Now, when we know of a close contact of a student or a staff member who's positive, and that warrants a quarantine, we don't have control over telling that student, "Oh, pick and choose when you want to quarantine," or what the dates are. Because that is a public health order at that point.
Right.
We just have to translate that message. Well, we do the contact tracing and the investigation, and then we let them know. This is, and that's what people don't like, to be quite honest. And I get it, because you're telling me now I have to be out for an extended period of time? Well, it's because of the situation, not because we're trying to force somebody to not be in school. But that is, that is our responsibility with public health.
Let me ask you a question there.
Yep.
So if someone, you know, tests positive, is there like two negative tests that they can have in a period of a couple of days to change assists? Because that's where the inflexibility seems to be, is if they have evidence that they're no longer testing positive, why 14 days?
So to be clear, if there is a positive COVID case, well, for one, I don't know of anyone that goes back to do another test, they treat that positive case as you're isolated for a 10-day window. The 14-day quarantine is for the individuals who may have had exposure from the initial onset of exposure. So for example, we will find out about a staff member that tests three or four days after the fact there was that initial date of exposure, and we find out it's a positive test. We go all the way back to 48 hours prior to the onset of that positive case or symptom, and we contact trace from that point forward. And that part is, once you have been quarantined, a negative test will not warrant you immune to quarantine. In other words, once you're quarantined, that 14-day window is, that's a locked and loaded cut point. So what we tell people is, it doesn't really matter if you get tested or not in terms of what your ability to come back to school would look like.
But this is precisely the inflexibility that's the issue, is I could go over here now, I find out, and get a free test. So why do I have to stay in quarantine if I know I'm negative?
Public health would say that the potential of, so there's a lot of variables in terms of when that test is taken. So you could take that test, let's say, two days after you find out, but the incubation period of COVID is being shown to be up to, I think it's the 10 or 12 days at that point, which is why they're very non-satisfied.
And there's a level of sensitivity for the test here as well.
There is, but I'm not sure that's current data that you just quoted there, in terms of that incubation period.
That's what the Health Department's reporting now, so
I understand that, but I'm not convinced it's current, but it's
But to that point, there's where we, you're in inflexibility, that we cannot mess with a quarantine. Our role at that point is we have to make sure that that is being communicated, and that's been our stance from the beginning. And it is clear as day in their guidelines, this cannot be trumped by superintendent or whoever.
I understand, I understand that. I'm not arguing with you.
Yep.
I'm just pointing out that it feels rigid and inflexible if there is testing available, and apparently there is. So that's, I would be questioning that back. If we have this testing, and we have negative results, then why the quarantine? Because, anyway, that's just all I
That part of the strategy, again, that would be something that is beyond the scope of a school district to say, I mean, you can ask the question.
No, that's all I'm saying. Are we communicating the questions? Because they're coming from your community. And then they can deal with it, but you know, right now, it's like, we got this uptick in people catching the virus.
Yes.
Positivity rate.
Yes.
Well, in March, I'd be scaring the holy crap out of me. But today, it doesn't scare me nearly as much, because I've learned so much about this virus that says, there's, there are those that are at risk, and we need to protect them. But it's not the entire population, like it was, frankly, in March.
So I think there becomes the, is there any area for us to ask the question? Sure. To what extent can we lobby for a different approach? That, to me, goes a little bit further than what our scope actually
What we do.
Yes.
Why? I'm just, I'm just curious why.
Because we're not, because I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm not a public health official. I'm not the person that makes those calls on behalf of an entire community.
Right, I get that. But what I, when I ask why is, is, first of all, I think that, I appreciate that every time we communicate this, and I don't think you can communicate it, I don't think we can over-communicate. I think that repetition in, in the understanding, the message, the communication is important, that, and that it is a consistent message. And so I actually, I don't care if we have to say it 10 times or 20 times. I think that it's important that we continue to say it so that if somebody else has a question, if a parent who has a child who hasn't paid attention to the discussion, for whatever reason, is now curious because their football player doesn't get to play football, and they're sitting looking out a window and quarantined by no fault of their own, but because they have a teacher who's, who's sick, that parent wants to understand why can't my child be back at school when we know for a fact that my child is, is negative? So I think that communicating that, continuing to share out, I think, is valuable for our community and for our parents and our kids to understand.
Well, I think that our school district are playing by the rules.
Right.
It's the rules you were given. It's not like you created the rules, you just have to deal with the rules you're given.
Right.
And so the question I ask about inflexibility, well, you can't change it anyway. You don't have a choice there.
Correct. So I think what we're running into is exactly what you're talking about, which is, we can share that information with you, but in terms of helping satisfy a frustration that those are the rules, it, what would you say? I mean, we do the best we can to help make sense of it, and we acknowledge and recognize that for some people, it's going to be really hard to accept that. And I get that. I mean, if I'm in that same situation, I hear why people are feeling that level of frustration. But I can't change that.
Right.
So they're coming back to that role, it becomes, we're the bearer of that difficult news, and, and then what we focus our attention on is what we can do. So how do we continue to use the structures and systems that we have available right now to still support that student within their educational process, even though they're not able to be physically present for the specified amount of time that they may have to be quarantined?
Anything else?
Uh, not at the moment.
Tiffany, would you like, do you have any comments?
I think that we've covered a lot today. Remember to vote, and the governor just put out a projection, budget projections for 21, 22 school year. That was emailed to us, so make sure you guys look over that. CASB delegate assembly was Friday. There was 21 resolutions, and I can share the, I think CASB sent the report, but I can also share which resolutions passed and which ones didn't in an email, just for why I share out information. That's all.
Do you have any other updates for relatives at CASB?
Um, no, no, I do not. They will have a business meeting coming up in December where delegates will vote on, so if I know what you're referring to, district, our region has an opening, for example, for a two-year term. You have to basically run an election, run against others in the region for that position. Business meeting, give a speech, and then that vacancy, if it's not filled, will be filled by a vacancy committee, which is like, I have not received any update from CASB or our region yet.
Thank you. Teresa?
Have any comments?
No comments?
No.
Well, all of your comments have been very good, both of you. I have enjoyed these meetings, I've enjoyed learning from you and hearing your perspectives. Dr. Summers, I'd like to just congratulate you and the entire group that work with you, because I think you implement things very well. This is, I've seen nimbleness and agility that, you know, is really good. And, you know, the questions that we ask sometimes are just, it's what we hear in our community, right? And it's not directed at any one of you individually. They're just concerns, right? And there are no, I don't know who has the right answers when it comes to this virus. I would just, I would just close with the same thing I'll put, today's the election day, and I'm glad that we live in a society where we have the opportunity to cast our ballots. And if we can change anything, that's what we have to do. So I encourage everyone to vote if they haven't already. And this meeting can stand adjourned until November 16th at our regular board meeting.
We'll have no the election results at that meeting as well.
Yes, we will. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.